Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of Beaver Creek City Council. We have a couple very important items to take care of first thing this evening, and so I'm going to start with asking our Parks and Rec Representative, Mr. Eric Corbett. Is Candy here tonight?
I don't think she may.
Eric? You know, volunteers in this community are our heartbeat, really. I mean, they keep this city running. They provide so many hours of volunteer service, and so the least we can do is try to recognize these volunteers once a year. So I'd like to read this proclamation, and I know you've heard it before, and some of us have as well, but it's worth repeating. So whereas volunteers give their time and talent tirelessly and selflessly, whereas volunteers' ideas, input, and enthusiasm create and support many special events for the enjoyment of the entire region, spend many hours teaching children the value of teamwork, discipline, sportsmanship, and respect while increasing their motor skills through participation in sports; and whereas volunteers tally many hours transporting seniors to appointments, serving nutritious lunches, providing assistance and program support for the senior center -- and that's a special one for me, I do enjoy driving the bus one, periodically. And whereas volunteers share their wisdom and expertise when called upon to serve on committees and boards; and whereas volunteers are vital in the quest to preserve the heritage and history of the city of Beaver Creek while strengthening, enhancing our community to make our city a better and more enjoyable place to live. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as Volunteer Month in the City of Beaver Creek, and recognize and thank all the volunteers for the contribution of their time and talents to the benefit of this community. Eric, I would like you to accept this on all those volunteers' behalf, and would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council members. We at the Park Board appreciate very much your recognition of all the volunteers that we appreciate so much. I read a quote, it's by an anonymous author about volunteerism, that I thought I'd share real quickly. It says, "Volunteering is the ultimate democracy." We vote, once every year, we vote in an election, but we vote every day when we volunteer about the kind of community that we want to live in. And we're so appreciative that so many folks in Beaver Creek do take the time, come out and support our parks, our programs. We couldn't do it without them, for sure. So, the weather's broke, right? We've got some really nice sunshine out there today, so we hope everybody comes out, enjoys the parks, participates in a program, and volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You say, "keep that one."
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next, we have a special presentation, so I'd like to invite Chief Evers, Officer Brown, and Mr. Doug Musser from the General Manager of Tobias. Please come on up. How you doing? Nice to see you. I understand you have a special presentation you'd like to make to the police department.
Yes, Tobias Funeral Home would like to donate $3,500 to Safety Town that the Beaver Creek Police Department is putting on.
Chief, I'll give it to the man.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it very much, so.
Now I'm going to hand it to you.
All right.
But we do appreciate it, Doug, that this generous donation, quite frankly, will help us finalize the items that we need for Safety Town, plus it will help with the distribution of items to the kids that are going to participate in Safety Town. Community Engagement Officer Mark Brown's heading up Safety Town. That is a program that we ran back in the late '80s and early '90s, which was for preschool and first grade children, to educate them on safety tips as they're entering into the school system. So Officer Brown could talk a little bit more about Safety Town, what he hopes to accomplish when we start this back up in June of this year.
And thanks again, Doug. Yeah, what Safety Town is, just briefly, quickly, it's an interactive, hands-on experience, like the chief said, for kindergarten and preschool kids, just to develop some life skills about anything safety-related. So we teach them those things, and it's one of our big outreach programs we're looking forward to working with the community on, story to tie in with outreach. We met Mr. Musser actually through our Citizens Police Academy, so, you know, he's out here in the community, and then he took our Citizens Police Academy and then learned about it, and, you know, he's paying it forward, basically. So it's great to have you on board, and thank you.
Thank you very much, and this is just another way of volunteering. I mean, there's all types of ways that people volunteer in our community. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, if we haven't called over the regular portion of the meeting, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Upton.
Motion to second to excuse Councilmember Upton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I would like to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Van for a moment.
Would we raise our [inaudible 00:01:58]. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could just remain standing for a brief moment, our Father, this will be a prayer, our Father, as elected officials, we all each care greatly about the success and sustainability of our city, to make it a great place for families and businesses. Thank you for watching over our community and all the people and members of that community, help all those who volunteer and contribute their time and effort to make it a better city, and watch over each of us as elected officials, to help us make wise and informed decisions. Amen.
We have an agenda before us this evening. Any alterations?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. The motion is second to approve the agenda is submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. We go on to approval of the minutes. First is the February 25th, 2019, regular meeting. Any changes?
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes, February 25th, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same.
One abstention.
Thank you. Next is March 11th, 2019, the regular scheduled meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the March 11th regular meeting minutes, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. I will abstain. Motion carries. First, public hearing.
This is an application filed by Yolo Development, 3,500 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite 500, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45431. The application requests approval for a specific site plan to allow for the development of a 9,800-square-foot retail building on 1.25 acres of land. The property is located on the northeast corner of Harbor Drive and Indian Ripple Road. The property is further described as Book Three, Page 19, Parcel 95, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present tonight? Would you like to make a presentation? Please give us your name and address.
My name is John Koppelcheck, 3,500 Pentagon Boulevard. Just a, you know, quick overview, we brought this through to be rezoned the beginning of this year. We bought about 4.6 acres on the corner of Harbor and Indian Ripple, and we are coming back now with a specific site plan for that first lot on Indian Ripple. It is a 9,800-square-foot building that we do have 50% leased already, so we're going to be starting right as soon as we get approval from you guys, hopefully. It is medical going in there, it's going to be mixed between medical, retail, and office, and we're excited for the project.
All right, thank you very much. Staff, have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. As Mr. Koppelcheck pointed out, tonight we're here considering a specific site plan for the Indian Ripple retail building located at the corner of Harbor and Indian Ripple Road. This is a lot that's been sit vacant for quite some time in the city of Beaver Creek, kind of been somewhat of an eyesore, because it was a demo of an existing vet clinic that's kind of left some remnants of the existing building, or the previous building that was on the site. And it is a pretty prominent quarter, corner, as you go down the Indian Ripple Road corridor. The lot you see before you is the one we're considering, it's about 20, about 1.5 acres. Again, it's a 9,800-square-foot building, mixture of some retail and some office. The existing site conditions, we're looked at a couple of things here with the sign. There's an entry sign here for the Office Park. That needs a lot of repair, so we've required that that be torn down, and they are proposing to do a multi-identification sign at the corner to kind of identify some of the tenants who are farther back on Harbor, like Mini University and Premier. Some of those guys are back down in that corner, so it will be some requirements for an eight-foot-tall sign to allow for some exposure for some of the tenants that are further down Indian Ripple Road, I mean, Harbor Drive off of Indian Ripple Road. This is the first phase of a two-phase project. Again, this was a rezone in January of 2019, approved by City Council, was an amendment to an existing PUD 96-4. This first phase is just for the retail building. You can see the site plan on the screen above. The stormwater management has already been accounted for the site. When the site was developed, there was a regional detention pond designed to contain all the water that's come from all the development within the project. So there is no onsite detention at this time, but the detention is already accounted for in existing ponds. As far as the parking, certainly well exceed the minimum requirement of 40 parking spaces, are providing, proposing 58 with two handicap parking spots located here. All those are in excess of the requirements of the zoning code. The landscape plan they provided also shows a good mix of some decorative plants, some shade trees, and some other perennials throughout the site to help really create the streetscape along Indian Ripple Road that we're looking for. There'll be 20-foot-tall lights, light fixtures within development with the requirement that none of the light fixtures be located outside of a perimeter island, so they will all be all included in the parking islands and around the perimeter of the site. This is, was previously an underlying B3, so there is a B3 requirement for the wall signage. There are specific requirements within the motion for your consideration about the actual ground sign at the corner, as I mentioned earlier, but the wall signage will be B3 standard, which is about one and a half square feet per linear foot of tenant space. So there's a, depending on the length of the frontage along Indian Ripple for the tenants, that will dictate the side, the size of the wall sign requirements. The building design itself is pretty attractive, I mean, we worked with them on upgrading it a little bit. There's some stone and some brick and some ephes. It does really provide a nice amenity on Indian Ripple Road from the street frontage standpoint, and it will help really bring that street presence along Indian Ripple to allow for some more of the development on the backside of this building for the self-storage facilities that will come at a later date, but this is a nice frontage project along Indian Ripple Road, from that standpoint. Some of the requirements within the resolution, if I go back to the site plan, we have a road project here where the sidewalk will be addressed along Indian Ripple for the city. We did require a sidewalk connection down along Harbor. Whether they construct this now on the other side of the access driver, or they do it with the store lock, we'll discuss that at a later date, but at this point, they are required to least build sidewalk down to the entrance. We've also required a pedestrian access to the sidewalk on Indian Ripple Road with a crosswalk that'll go through the drive aisle there to get pedestrians from the Indian Ripple Road sidewalk to the front part of the building. There is a dumpster enclosure located onsite, back in the corner, so that's not going to have much impact on anybody. There is no residential around this area, they do meet all the setbacks as established in the zoning for this project, and we are recommending approval, along with a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission, with the subject of the motion, of the conditions attached in the motion. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Anyone? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and it's council input. We'd like to start down in the corner, Councilmember Littrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for continuing with this project here in Beaver Creek. I think it's going to be a great access and opportunity for Indian Ripple. That area is in need of some updating, and so I look forward to seeing that. Also believe that the, I want to call them store locks, but I think that'll be great for that area, especially because I know it'll be further back. So it looks like some great opportunities, so thanks to staff and the developer for continuing to work with Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Councilmember Rushing?
No comment.
Councilmember Van?
I just wanted to review which elevation is on Indian Ripple and which elevation is on, can you, Harbor, yeah. Could you put those two, I just want to see what those two faces look like. So this is Indian Ripple?
Sure. This is the Indian Ripple side.
Okay, and then what is the one on Harbor?
This is the one that'll be along Harbor.
So it wraps halfway back?
Yeah, I mean, the stone facade is really on the corner of the building. All the materials that you find on the front are incorporated around all four sides of the building, so even on the rear of the building, it won't have any other material than what you see on these, the front and the side.
Are we going to have Pilates in a coffee shop? I'm just joking. I'm just joking. No, I think it, I think it looks like it could be, I'm glad to see it was wrapped. I was, when you flipped those through, I just wanted to verify that we were paying attention to the visual. And the parking spaces, we've only got two that are for handicap, but I saw on one of the plans that it was nine feet wa, there's a, are some of them wider? How wide are those?
Well, with the striping in the middle, that does create the minimum requirements for the ADA. That's not a parking stall, that allows for the in-and-out access of anybody.
And what's the width of all those parking spaces?
I think they're, are they nine-by-18s, probably?
Okay, so they're a little bit wide, they aren't the real skinny ones, so...
No, we won't really go below nine-by-18, depending, like, where we're looking, 10-by- 10-by-20 or nine-by-18 are the standards that we apply.
Okay, that's all? Thank you.
Councilmember Kern?
On the conditions sheet, amplify a little bit on the stormwater management. It seems to imply in the conditions that, at least it's stated, may not meet, well, what, you noticed, you said in your comments, though, Jeff, that necessary modifications have been taken place to, that the stormwater management issues would be abated?
Well, we do, in all the conditions on all these projects, you'll see that the stormwater management is still subject to approval by the engineering department.
Right.
Because full construction drawings could dictate some of the issues with grading or how the stormwater is collected. We don't get in that level of detail at this point, in terms of a fully engineered site with the, where everything will go, so as they, before they get the permit, they will have to fully engineer the site, and that could have some changes that would require the engineering department to approve, prior than just to us conceptually saying, yes, there is a regional detention pond here that will hold the storm.
All right, okay.
And Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Nothing more, Your Honor. Vice Mayor Garcia?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. No, it'll be, I think it's going to be an attractive building for that site, and I hope that maybe there won't be a closed mind about what goes on behind it, too. I mean, it could be, if this is very successful, maybe you could even think about doing things that are more along this line than the store locks that we're talking about, so. Just hopefully you keep an open mind on that, so.
Can I have one more question?
Yes.
Sidewalks on, on...
Yeah, he's putting sidewalks on.
I just wanted him to emphasize.
Sidewalk along Indian Ripple, which is here, okay, so there's no access.
It's existing?
What's that?
It's already existing?
It is, but there is a road project that will come through and redo the sidewalks there, right?
And what's your...
Yeah, so a 2020 project on Indian Ripple Road that will continue some of the streetscape design and sidewalks, and it might be a multi-use path that you see coming along there, but it is part of our project now, and right now, we're requiring the sidewalk to come down Harbor to at least the entryway, and we'll deal with the rest of it when it comes to the store lock.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else from council? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Please, Councilmember Littrell, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve PUD 18-4. I move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval of the specific site plan for Indian Ripple Retail on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials, and modification, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required for this approval shall be as follows, which there are 22. I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve specific site plan number one on PUD 18-4. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Next, PUD is a public hearing, is PUD 18-2, specific site plan number one.
This is an application filed by Miami Valley Hospitality LLC, 2919 Ambrosia Lane West, Xenia, Ohio, 45385. The application requests approval of a specific site plan to allow for the development of a four-story, 87 guest room Holiday Inn Express on 2.402 acres of land. The property is located on the west side of Esquire Drive, approximately 250 feet north of the intersection of Lakeview Drive and Esquire Drive, further described as Book Four, Page Five, Parcel 104, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone representing this case? Oh, there you go. How you doing? Mr. Kossler?
Name's Mitch Kossler, Kossler Engineering, 545 Hilltop Road, Beaver Creek. Basically, we were putting in a four-story Holiday Inn Express. We've coordinated all the particulars with the city staff. The existing site has storm sewer running through it. It was graded down back when that, the adjacent lots were developed, and it just stayed vacant for many years. And we are putting in new storm sewer above the storm sewers there, so that we can get our parking areas and building drained into the, our proposed stormwater control pond, and that'll meet the EPA water quality standards. The stormwater detention was part of the overall development area, but again, regulations changed, it got more stringent, and so we had to continue on, so we've got a small detention pond on the site. And I think as far as, there's some conditions that, a lot of the conditions are items that were just, are being dealt with, or have been dealt with, so. Are you going to be giving a presentation then? Okay, so I'll be, that's all I need to say. I'll sit down, if you've got any questions, I'll be right here.
All right, Mitch, thanks. All right, staff, please.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. The case you have before you is PUD 18-2. It's the specific site plan number one for the Holiday Inn Express. They're looking to construct a four-story hotel on about two and a half, a little less than two and a half acres. Project's located in northern Beaver Creek, it's south of the intersection of Commons and Esquire. Just for reference, the Wallabees, it's across the street on Esquire from where this is located. To the south is some doctor's offices and professional offices. To the west is apartment complex, and to the north is the Woodcroft Center, and then there's the National Tire and Battery also to the north. So this is a vacant parcel that's surrounded by development right now. Again, this property was rezoned early last year to a PUD, and specifically, the PUD was for the construction of a hotel. There was setbacks given in the ordinance, and all the setbacks and buffer requirements have been met with their application. Seen here is the proposed site plan. They're looking to have two access points to the site. One is right off of Esquire Drive, and the secondary access is going to be off the, there's an existing access segment behind the shopping center, well, between the Woodcroft Center and the National Tire and Battery. It was a stub that was designed expressly for the purpose of having a secondary access for whatever is developed on this site, so they did tie into that, so we do have the two access points. In terms of parking, hotels are required to have one parking space for each room, plus one for every five rooms. And so based on the calculation, they are required to have 92 parking spaces, which is what they provide. So they do meet all our minimum requirements for parking and the handicap parking, they show four handicap parking spaces, which is what parking lots of this size are required to have. The building itself, I highlighted in orange here, it's 223 feet wide, it's 69 feet deep, and it's a little over 48 feet to the top of the parapet wall that's on the very top of the building. Again, all the setbacks from the southern property line and the western property line and along the road have been met with this application. What they're proposing is a primarily red and brown ephes brick, so it's an ephes, but they stamp it to look like a brick texture. You'll find that in a lot of the, like, the Spring Hill Suites that's up near there, that's that same material, it's, and then, like, the Pentagon Tower is also an ephes stamped to look like brick, so it's material that we've seen used in the past quite a bit. They do show a stone base around all four elevations, and then a stone entry tower, or stone tower over the entryway, and then the same stone tower's on the rear of the building, so they do carry all the elements around all four elevations of the building. In the front of the building, there is a covered drop-off area, or port crochet, and that also has stone pillars and then a metal awning over top. I just wanted to do a close-in highlight of the stone, or the texture, so they do have that brick texture on the brown and the red, and then there's the smoother ephes is the tan. In terms of landscaping, they do show a good landscaping plan, it's landscaped around a majority of the sites. They do show a good amount of evergreen trees on the western property line. We did have them, because there's apartments to the west, we did have them designate 20, the first 20 feet of this western property line as a no-grade zone. We'll have them put temporary fencing in when they're doing grading, so that this stays. It's wooded right now, and we want to keep it that way. It's easier to, it's a lot more, it's a better screen to keep mature landscaping than try to remove landscaping and put new landscaping in. So the first 20 feet will be a no-grade zone, and then once construction's complete, we'll have them remove that fence, because we don't want to have that orange fence stay out there. One thing we did have concern with was the landscaping to the south of the building, because it is, there's a one-story building just to the south. We're proposing that they add in extra evergreen trees and shrubs along that southern property line. Talked to the applicant, they don't have a problem with that, but we did add it as a condition of approval. In terms of lighting, their lighting plan showed 22 and a half-foot poles, but because, again, we have residential immediately to the west, we added a condition that it'd be no higher than the 16-foot poles that we would find in areas that are near, commercial uses that are abutting, non-commercial uses, and again, they didn't have a problem with that. In terms of signage, they show two wall signs. They're a combination, there's a six-foot by six-foot logo, and then a six-foot by 12-foot text sign, and they show that on both the east and the north elevations. Staff didn't see a problem with them, they're going to be 40 feet high in the air, and they'll be internally lit, so, you know, we didn't have any concerns with the size or location. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval of the applicant's requests, and I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Anyone at all? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Council input. How about we start the other side? Councilmember Kern?
At this point, Your Honor.
Councilmember Van?
Not really.
Okay.
I think it is, it was interesting to me that we would be adding another hotel up by the mall, but my daughter and I had a discussion about it, because it's on the agenda, and I was just shocked, and she said, "The synergy of having hotel rooms where there are so many other activities going on is really good." And so if she goes someplace to a conference, or needs to be at business, having a mall close by, having right state across, just having all that stuff close, and so, no, I, I'm happy with Holiday Inn Express, so.
What's the name of that one egg? That's just up the street.
Another broken egg.
Another broken egg.
Broken egg?
Yeah.
Well, they serve, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna serve free breakfast there, so it'll be competition.
They won't leave broken egg to go over there anymore.
Not if they have those waffle makers.
Councilmember Rushing?
No comment, thank you.
Councilmember Littrell? Counsel member Littrell?
I just would like to reiterate, I think it's a great opportunity. Again, when I was in a previous position, I had accreditation, and I would bring people in from Texas and, you know, all over the United States for an audit. And that was the one thing, they loved Beaver Creek, and I always had them stay up here and so they could have the mall. There's just so many opportunities, and with some of the great venues that we have coming, that's even a better reason to have another mall that close, or another, excuse me, hotel close to the mall. So, thank you, and I look forward to the.
Counsel member, or Vice Mayor Garcia?
I would just echo everybody else and just chime in that I had family visit recently, too many to house in my own home, and they all had to get hotel rooms, and I had compliments about the city the entire weekend that they were here. So I think it was counsel member Littrell last year who said, "We've become a destination." And what do you need at a destination? You need hotels. So I'm very happy to see this, and I think it's a great location, so I look forward to, I look forward to breakfast also, but I look forward to the building itself. Thank you for choosing Beaver Creek.
All right. And I don't have anything to add to that. It's, as an old timer, sometimes you do get the mindset and think that is enough enough, but it, we're still growing, and so it's, it's a needed. Our hotel stay, occupancy rates are very, very high. I mean, a lot of times, even today, people have to go outside of Beaver Creek to get a room for certain events, so.
We don't want that.
No, we don't. No, we don't. All right. Any further comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion, I move for purposes of taking administrative action, approval of a specific site plan for this Holiday Inn Express on the basis that the council finds the facts submitted with the application and the accompanying materials and modifications, amendments and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which there are 23. I further move in the motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 18 dash two, specific site plan number one with 23 conditions. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Thank you. Mitch, have a good evening. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First off is ordinance 19 dash two.
This is the second reading of an ordinance increasing the annual salary of the members of council to $12,000 effective January 1, 2020, per charter section 4.1 compensation.
Thank you. This is the second reading, so it is a public hearing. If there's anyone this evening that would like to come forward and address counsel on this issue, please do so now. Try to limit your comments to three minutes unless you have time donated by up to nine. So, please give.
1423 Town Hall. Why are we going 100% increase on council pay? That's the question that a lot of people are asking. 100% increase, $6,000, $12,000, when the only rationale that I've heard or been given is to be able to participate in a state retirement program. A lot of us didn't even know that you were in the state retirement program. Why not social security? But to go from 6,900, which is what it'd take to maintain that, to 12,000 is hard to grasp, hard to grasp. You're all volunteers. Tonight's volunteer night. I volunteered for this community, got the zero. I'm not saying you don't deserve a pay raise, but 100% increase, when the only rationale is participation in a state retirement program. Only rationale given, okay? I've heard people say, "Well, they got expenses." You can get reimbursed for expenses, okay? That's why? Please explain to us 100% increase. You've got levies coming up. This is a poor time to be getting 100% pay increase. When you look at the city charter, even within this very paragraph, it talks about payment of council expenses. You have to pass a resolution. I've never seen a resolution passed yet for council expenses. Four places have I found payment of council expenses. It's never done, never done. So please explain the 100% increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on this issue? Anyone at all? We will close the public hearing. Comments? Anybody like to make a comment?
I would.
Please.
I know one thing that public employees come in many shapes and forms, not just firefighters and police officers, but also elected officials fall under that. Retirement doesn't impact me, but it does and could other people. One of the things I do think that we do have levies coming up, this doesn't impact me because I'm termed out. So, you know, I, do I think council should have a slight increase? I do. A lot of people don't realize it is. I do consider this volunteer, I do consider this service, but you do receive compensation. But one of the things that people don't realize that, you know, and I think back, my first term that I didn't realize for the public is, you do a lot of driving, you do, which, again, you can get reimbursement, but you do a lot more than what people think. And the more active you are, the more involved as the mayor, I mean, he spends a lot of time with the base, I mean, there's a lot to do. And so with that, I do think that there is a need for an increase. I don't know if I would, as a voter, feel comfortable with 50%, and I mentioned that before. You know, I think 8,500, you know, somewhere in between there, I think, is acceptable, but, you know, again, I think it's something that, I'm old school, and I still feel that the voters should be the ones that provide and tell someone when, you know, give elected officials raises. So that's just my two cents as an outgoing council member. But I do, I really want the citizens to understand, there is a lot more than coming here on Monday evenings and our work sessions. A lot of work and effort go into making sure that the city runs well, the city has great employees, and the council members, we may not always agree, but we like to agree to disagree sometimes. And I think everyone here has put their heart and soul, and even past council members that I've worked with, everyone does, you know, goes above and beyond, so.
Anyone else have a comment?
My question is to staff, to our legal counsel. Would it be possible to amend the ordinance if council so desired to change the rate at this time in the second reading, or would it be viewed as a material difference?
In my opinion, would not be a material difference. I'm assuming that the, that the motion would be probably to decrease it, and so, no, that would not be material. It would move on in two weeks for the third reading.
My thoughts after the last meeting, receiving emails, as we all have also, receiving phone calls, and members of the public speaking to me, you know, a lot of times, perception's reality, even though it may not be presented that way. When being viewed as a public servant, I believe that we do have a responsibility to listen to the comments that we receive from members of the public, as well as to be as frugal as we possibly can with the funds presented. When we spoke about this at the work session, I tend to try to listen and gain, become smarter about an issue before I speak to it. And to me, I believe that we could entertain, in my opinion, I may lack a second, but we could entertain a change to the ordinance to reflect a minimum credit of PERS without doubling the actual salary. From my research and from what's presented, the minimum credit for PERS would be, which is the Public Employee Retirement System, that's that acronym, PERS, would be $660 a month. Currently, council members are compensated at a rate of $500 a month. So that would be an increase, which, as we know from our research, and the last time this council has voted on a pay increase was in 2005, so it's been 14 years. My, my position would be to entertain a motion to change the ordinance to read to being paid $660 a month, which would be an annual salary of $7,920. I'm willing to make that motion, but before I do, I'm open to hear the rest of council's input and to see if there's a consensus on the matter. Thank you.
Just, just, oh, I'm sorry, mayor, just, if I might, just for the record, I would round that up to make it, you know, effectively $8,000, and not, not make it equate to so much per month, but so much total, because that's how the, that's how legislation is drafted. So if it was 8,000, that'd be a clean way, if there's going to be a change to it, that would be clean.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to remind us that we are the third-largest community in the Dayton metropolitan region. City council members in Centerville make $14,500 a year. In Kettering, they make $22,980 a year. Miamisburg, $14,515. Springfield is, Springfield is either 12 or 13. Springfield is $14,330. We, you know, we're the, we're a big city, and council is very cautious about asking for new money, and so it's been 15 years since we've asked for new money. So I don't think it's too much to ask for $1,000 a month.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I would agree with council member Van, and I actually agree with council member Rushing, too. We're kind of spread out all over. I thought 12,000 was a lot until I heard it broken down to $1,000 a month, and all of us up here, most of us up here have jobs, or at one time did this job and had full-time jobs. And in order to do some of the things that we do as a public servant, we have to take time away from our day jobs to do those things. And it was 15 years since there's been a raise.
Longer than that.
Yeah, it could be another 15 years before council asks for another raise.
It was my first term on, so this has been 20 years. I heard that they mentioned last time. It was the middle of my first term on council when it, when it was passed, because my second term on council, I was raised, I got the salary. So it went from, the first time it came about, it went from 2,000 to 6,000, which is not double, it's triple. And like I said, it's been 20 years. And so, and opers, the minimum, it's changed twice in the last couple of years going up. So to set it at what it is today, it's going to be outdated again tomorrow. We're looking at something that we're not, it's like our levies in a sense. We, we know that the first year of a levy is going to be plush, because that same dollar amount is continuous. And so at the end of that levy, now you're bringing, you're covering all, you're still covering all your expenses. Well, if we're looking, we're not, if we're, unless we're looking to do this every other year, which I don't think council wants to do, then we have to look at to the future as well. But that was one thing I wanted to clear up, that it has been 20 years. And you, if you simply do the general inflation, I know on average, I think, well, another stat I wanted to throw out, you threw out some of our neighbors and their income. Our township trustees make $28,000 to $30,000 a year. Our county commissioner makes $60,000 a year. And they don't do any more work than we do on council, in some cases, less, especially, I won't point any fingers, but the, but the point being is that this, while this is volunteer work, it sure is, there are expenses, and they're not expenses that you can document most of the time. They're just expenses, and you spend time, I spend 30 to 40 hours a week. I mean, there is no other way around it. And for somebody that's working full-time, to try to take time off and do that as well, I mean, that's tough. Now, I don't expect everybody to spend quite that much time, but that's just the way it Does it need to double? It can be argued that, you know, that's a big step, but the same argument held true 20 years ago, and then we tripled it. Reality is reality. We lowered the, we lowered the number of votes on, or signatures on a petition to try to encourage people to run, because we weren't getting people to run. Part of that reason is also, you can't afford to be on council hardly anymore at $6,000 a year. By the time you pay taxes, especially if you're working, so now that's just a tax burden on top, and they put you in a different bracket. I'm not stuck on 12, but I do not think it's unrealistic, because I'm looking, and again, I'm looking at the council that sits here seven, eight, 10 years from now, they're still going to be getting the same, whatever it is we do today. But anyway, I'm open.
I'm open.
Sorry to jump in front of you.
I think it's also important to remember, too, that even, council member Littrell mentioned that she's termed out, but this does not affect anybody sitting up here right now immediately. Well, all of us have to win reelection.
You have to get reelected.
In order for it to affect any of us. So we really, truly are trying to think about a future council, and how future council and council members will react to this, and how future potential candidates will view running for city council, seeing as how this year, we, the past election, we had two write-ins. We just, there was just not, the interest there didn't seem to be as there has been in years past.
And the point, it's a great point, that we are not giving ourselves a raise unless we get reelected. We cannot do that. So we are doing this not to put it in our pocket necessarily, but so the future councils get whatever they deserve. All right, before we move on for a motion, I think you wanted to address one of the other questions that was raised.
Yeah, if I can have Mr. McHugh address, just a statement that was said about the expenditures. It was mentioned in section 4.10. If Mr. McHugh would please review legally what we do as far as to cover council expenses as part of the annual appropriation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. What you have up on the screen is section 10.10. 4.10 does provide that council may by resolution, adopt resolutions with respect to receiving necessary and reasonable expenses. A number of years ago, though, knowing what the budget process is and the annual appropriation process for the city, section 10.10 was revised to include a provision to specifically say that there is no required resolution adopt under 4.10 if it is, if the expenses are approved in the annual appropriation ordinance or in an amendment. And I know a question was raised with respect to this, and I spoke with Mr. Casera on all the expenses that have been approved so far this year and last year for that matter, have been, to my knowledge and discussion with him, have always been appropriated expenses, appropriated for council. So, and therefore, they would fall under 10.10 and not 4.10. So I just want to point that out.
And on some of the larger items, we have done resolutions. For the city manager to go to his conference, we did it. The DDC fly-in, we did it.
The D, that one is specifically, yes.
So they have, there are times when we do it as a, because it's a large item.
Correct. But those are still.
But they're still not required.
That's right, and they're still appropriated council expenses, but they are specifically, as you're saying, mayor, they're specifically set forth specifically. And in my opinion, they still fall under 10.10, not 4.10.
All right. So this being the second reading of this ordinance, it will naturally move on to the third reading, but before that time, if there's somebody that wants to make a motion to amend, they're welcome to do so.
As mentioned previously, I'm more than happy to make a motion to amend the amount to a lower amount, but the consensus, in my opinion, from the comments by council members, is to leave it as is. I do not know, I threw out the PERS minimum, only because that was a number that I've researched and was comfortable with, but if there's another number that we look to, we could do that, or if not, the consensus of councils would move forward as presented. I'm happy to rescind my motion.
Is that a motion? Or a number?
No.
Okay.
It's not a motion, right?
Is there any further discussion? Anyone else have a motion?
No. Mr. Mayor, I would.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to amend to a $9,000 a year increase for salary, and if there's a second or not, but I, I would make the motion to increase it to 9,000 as opposed to the 12,000.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion to amend the ordinance to make the salary increase, to make the salary $9,000 annually. And I have a second, so. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littoral?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
No.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
No.
Mayor Stone?
No. Okay, so any further motions?
I would move for approval of the.
Now, there's no motion needed right now.
No, that's right.
For approval. This moves on to the third reading. That's where the final motion will be taken. All right, thank you.
Democracy at its finest. I like it.
Okay, next item ordinance, 19-03, appropriations.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations, certify additional revenue, and authorize inter-fund transfers for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, and to amend ordinances 18-28 and 19-1.
Thank you.
You dine.
Mr. Casera?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. This is a, our first appropriation and certification of revenue and transfers, and it's quite lengthy, so you have to bear with me for a few minutes. The first one is the general fund and the golf course. They're kind of intermingled here, so I'll present them both in total here, but there's three items, actually. One, you recall from last year, when we transferred money from the general fund to the golf course fund to eliminate the due-to-do from, which was an audit recommendation. We went ahead and did that. We moved the money from the general fund to the golf course, and again, we thought at the end of the year that the auditors would make the appropriate entries to take care of the receivable and liability. And for their discussion with them, they also, they wanted us to do another transfer back, so transfer the money back to the general fund, and from there, they'll make the entries to offset that receivable and liability. So, again, we have to appropriate the money out of the golf course and certify the revenue coming into the general fund, and that, in essence, will take care of that receivable and that liability in those two funds. So, just a added step here that they, after looking at it, again, very unique, not a lot of cities have these kind of enterprise funds that have gone through this process. Again, just to let you know that that 964 was an accumulation of the receivable and the liability of going back to 2004. So, again, it's not something that just occurred, you know, over one year or anything like that. So, again, we have to go through that step. Then, during that same policy discussion, we indicated that in the future, rather than at the end of the year, the general fund transferring money as an advance, meaning that it was gonna be paid back somewhere down in the future, we realized that that's probably not gonna happen in the near future while the debt service is still out there. So, the auditors recommended that at the end of the year, we actually do another transfer to cover any operating loss that occurred above and beyond what we had budgeted. So, again, what we've determined is that we have that number now, and that number is $120,171. So, again, we have to transfer the money from the general fund to the golf course to offset that. So, again, the golf course at the end of the year has a zero fund balance, so. Again, Steve's here, in case you wanted to talk a little bit about that, but obviously, we had a very wet year last year. We were down a lot of rounds of golf, and that obviously is the variable that drives the profitability out at the golf course, so. The third item is that this is just a budgeting error. The debt service in there was listed as $260,000. It was actually $280,000. So, again, we need to transfer the money to the, from the general fund to the golf course to make up for that error in the budgeting process, that that extra $20,000 we need for the principal payment for the clubhouse. And then, the last item is, last year, we budgeted $40,000 for our capital improvement at the golf course, which included the columns, the soffits, the bricks, the concrete work around those columns, and we put it all out to bid last year, and we put it on as a, as a total project. And what we got back were bids that were two and three times higher than we had budgeted for. So, what we decided to do was to split up the project into smaller components, realizing that some of these things are very specialized trades, and a general contractor will only deal with high profit margins. So, again, we split it out into individual trades that we think we can get a better price to get those things accomplished. Well, in the meantime, we didn't rebudget that, and we didn't encumber any of that $40,000, so that money went back to the fund balance technically, but now we actually wanna do that. We actually put the bid out, and we're gonna have the two worst columns done first to see the process and make sure that it's functioning properly in the way we want it to look visually. So, again, what the golf course wants to do then is to budget $10,000 to do the two worst columns, to see how that process goes. And again, because the money wasn't spent last year, we have to reappropriate it this year in order to accomplish that and get that project off the ground. So, again, recapping the 964, we're gonna do that just as a transfer. Then, about $150,000 with those three items need to be transferred from the general fund to the golf course, and that will take care of the operating loss, the capital project, and the, the accounting error, the budgeting error that occurred. So, I'll stop there for a minute. That's a lot to take in, and there was a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts, but the bottom line is, is that, again, this is all part of the new policy and the requirements per the audit to look at that due-to-do from, eliminate it, and again, say that, you know, it really can't be in advance. It might as well just be a permanent transfer in order to, that, for the golf course to break even, so. Any questions related to those massive entries?
I know it's in the memo, but just for the public's sake, even with these adjustments to the general fund, it will maintain the 20% fund balance?
That's a good point, yeah. We, over last year, we got revenue in addition to the amount that was budgeted, so we had a little bit of surplus there, property taxes, hotel, interest, that type of thing. And then, the departments actually didn't spend all of their money. They spent about 94% of the expenditures that were budgeted. So, again, that goes into the fund balance, which took it over the 20, and this $150,000 will still keep us over the 20 benchmark that, that you've indicated.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anyone else?
Okay, no, here we go. This is the next one. So, the street, there's, there's four of these, so bear with me here. The street levy fund, the 203 fund, we actually had budgeted two dump trucks in there. So, again, there's two components of that. One is the chassis, the truck itself, and then there's the upfitting related to that. Well, we ordered the two trucks last year, and I don't know if we, we were supposed to get them this week. I haven't verified that we did, but you can see the delay it took to get those on the, you know, through the production line and to us. Now, what has to happen next is, is that they go for upfitting. So, they put the dump compartment on the back, they do all the hydraulics for the, the snoo plows and the brine systems, and those have to be done. Well, we budgeted $118,000 last year to do that. We didn't get the trucks, so what we decided to do was, we didn't rebudget it, and we didn't encumber it, so that money went, again, into the fund balance, but now we need, actually need to do that upfitting for the $118,000. So, again, the money's in the fund balance in the bank account, and we're gonna go ahead and process that, but we need to appropriate those funds in order to do that. The other thing is, is that we had one in the budget for 2019 for the upfitting, same kind of truck, and since we're gonna be doing them all together, there are some economies of scale to doing all three of those together now as we get the other one, too. So, we'll have three in there, and hopefully, we'll get a decent price for the upfitting for all three of those trucks, and maybe save a little bit of money to do that. But again, we need to appropriate that money that was budgeted in earmarked last year that just didn't get carried over. The third item is the park levy fund. In 2018, we had budgeted to do the Fox Run Park improvement, and that basically involves walking paths at that particular park. And what happened was that we didn't get to it in 2018. Again, we didn't carry over the money, we didn't encumber the money, and we didn't rebudget it, but they do, I actually wanna do that, capital improvement. Again, those funds, the $2,800 went into the fund balance, it's sitting in the bank account waiting to be spent, and now what we wanna do is bring that project back and appropriate that money to get that project accomplished, so that was $2,800. Then, the last and final item in this agenda is the Regional Emergency Response Team, which we affectionately call the RERT. Just to give you a little background, that is a organization comprised of four members right now, which is Fairborn, Beaver Creek, Huber Heights, and Vandelia. And the purpose really of that organization is to assist the member agencies with incidents that are better resolved by officers with specialized training. So, again, hostage situations, that type of thing, that, again, we have this organization to get them the proper training to handle those unique experiences, and that's what that the RERT is designed to do. Since the city of Beaver Creek is the largest of the groups, we have the responsibility then, a fiduciary responsibility of accounting for all of their money and their expenditures. So, what always happens is there's a timing issue related to their budget and our budget. They never get it done when we need it to get done, so they pass their budget in January 2019, and what we have to do on our side then is to certify that revenue that they have in their budget and to appropriate the expenditures related to that. So, again, that's just something that is a timing issue that we just need to take care of. Then, again, the other unique thing that happened this year was that the RERT decided that they wanted to purchase a new armored vehicle and replace their 1983 armored vehicle. And so, what we ended up doing was the four cities signed an agreement indicating that they are all gonna be, understand that that's gonna be part of the budget process, and then what we had to do, again, as the lead agency, was to understand that they wanted to go out. We ended up getting a quote for that new vehicle. It's a sole source, only provided by one vendor, and also, we had to go out there and get tax-exempt lease financing for that. So, again, I put that out to bid, we got four or five quotes, and we ended up getting a municipal capital lease for the $248,400 for 3.21%, which is ironically enough, the exact same percent we got for the golf cart lease last year. So, again, it was good to see that rates hadn't gone up, even though the Federal Reserve rate had gone up a little bit. So, with that, we have to budget that amount, because, again, we'll be getting the revenue in from the lease, and we have to allocate and appropriate that money for the payment. So, the only thing about this was that there's about an eight or nine-month lead time in getting this vehicle, so we're gonna put in the order, assuming that you approve that in the next agenda item, and then, once we get that, we'll pay that, but the capital lease payments won't start till 2020. So, we do have to appropriate that and certify that revenue coming in on top of the RERT budget that we just, I just mentioned. So, that takes care of that agenda item. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone? All right.
Mr. Mayor, saying no comments. I will move for the adoption of ordinance 1903.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littoral?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes, thank you. Next, Resolution 19-22.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a Bearcat armored vehicle from Lenco on behalf of the Regional Emergency Response Team, and to enter into a tax-exempt municipal lease financing with U.S. Bancorp Governmenting, Government Leasing and Finance Inc. to finance the purchase.
Thank you. Mr. Casera, you're still on the clock here.
Yes, so again, just want to reemphasize that this is gonna be purchased by the RERT. We're the lead agency. We have to execute, execute the purchase agreement with them, do the PO, and we also are the ones that are signing the documents for the capital lease. It's a five-year capital lease. Again, the way it's designed is, is that we are actually the one that is liable for that, but we have an agreement with the other members that agree to be part of this program that they signed off, saying that they will make their required payment over the next five years. So, again, it's a five-year lease. The amount is $248,400, and what you have before you, just like Diane read, was the, allowing the city manager to sign those documents related to the purchase agreement and the municipal lease agreements with U.S. Bancorp. I forgot to mention that that is the agency that won the bid. So, again, as I described, we're gonna order it this year. The lease payments don't start till 2020. The lease payments will be $18,094 per year per member, and again, that'll start in January 2020. And I, I think it's just important to note here, too, that not only is the annual membership that the city pays to be part of that organization, this Bearcat lease, capital lease payment are all taken out of state and federal forfeiture. So, again, there's no police levy money involved in this organization, and with that new debt service that'll be out there with the capital lease. So, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Again, we're using federal forfeitures, not police operating money to do that. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any?
Have the other cities, have they already passed resolutions?
Have the other parties of the agreement already passed resolutions, or where are we at?
That's an interesting question. There's four members that are party to this. One member is considering not being a member later on. They didn't wanna sign the agreement for that commitment, so three of the cities signed for that commitment, and that fourth one is probably going to be out next year. So, again, we realize that.
But the other, other two have already signed.
We do have a three-way commitment.
Right, but, but as far as the organization, all four of them had to sign it, but really three are the ones that are committing to the debt service payments in the future.
Okay.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, Resolution 19-23.
This is a resolution approving and authorizing a new mutual aid agreement between Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, 88th Security Forces Squadron, and the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I do have the memorandum of understanding with Wright-Patt that outlines the procedures when mutual aid assistance is requested by either of the parties. The agreement before you is an update of the current agreement that was executed in 2003, and if you look at the 2003 signature page, none of those individuals are currently still with us in these capacities, except for Mr. McHugh, who approved the 2003 agreement as the fore.
Well, I was sitting here with you, Steve, in 2003, so that's all right.
This, this does update the agreement, and Mr. McHugh has reviewed it, and there are no substantial changes to the document, except the updating of information and signatures, which both parties needed to do.
All right, very good. Discussion? Anyone have any questions, the chief? All right, it's obviously a wonderful partnership to have with, with Wright-Patt and the mighty 88.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to have a motion for Resolution 19-23 for the MOU, memorandum of understanding with Wright-Patterson Air Force Base.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-23. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and I know while you're still standing there, we're moving on to liquor permits. El Toro, please.
Yes, this is a request for a new liquor permit for El Toro Beaver Creek LLC, known business as El Toro.
business as El Toro Mexican Bar and Grill. My understanding is they're moving into the new, or the old Abuelos building, still going to maintain their current location for the time being. So the Ohio Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of the request for the new D5I liquor permit for El Toro, operating 2420 North Fairfield Road. The records checks required by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted for this request, and staff is recommending this request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, Councilmember Littoral?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Decision item, City of Peace Exploratory Committee Liaison. We've discussed this a little bit before, and Councilmember Van, would you like to give just a brief description of what is going forward?
In the region, because the Dayton Peace Accords were signed here, there's always been this synergy of moving forward with thoughts about peace around the world and the United Nations. In Dayton, we have the Healthfulness Institute, which is a arm of, is a partner with the United Nations in promoting peace. And so, and I have been the president of Friendship Force International, which does international relations. So I'm always thinking about peace and what we're doing to work toward peace. So what, in the Dayton region, Dayton is a city of peace, Cincinnati is a city of peace, Springfield, Urbana, Mechanicsburg, and several other in the region are in the process of becoming cities of peace. There's 238 cities of peace around the world at this time. So I have requested, because of all this synergy of being involved with what is it that makes cities, cities of peace? It can be defined any way we want it and any way our cities, citizens want. But I want to celebrate the United Nations International World Day of Peace every September. We've talked with the library about maybe celebrating peace topics with books and programs for children, maybe anti-bullying, something on that order. We've talked to the schools about maybe talking about character development and how peace is something that is valued. There's a learning program for fourth graders that I don't know if we can implement in Beaver Creek, but it helps, it's kind of like the Lego thing, only it's strategic decision-making, and fourth graders are making decisions on how international crisis for water shortage or other things could be decided, and these kids are thinking through that. There's lots of things that could happen, but at this time, we're going to pull together just an exploratory committee to see who, what we would like in Beaver Creek. It'll be the schools, the libraries, scouts, churches, service organizations. I think I might open it up and let whoever wants to come to the table, come to the table, and we'll just see who comes and what ideas come. The ideas that would come from this committee would come back before city council for review. And so I would, I would like to be appointed as the city council representative, to be on that exploratory committee, thinking forward that Beaver Creek, too, might become a city of peace.
And that is our goal this evening, is to officially recognize Councilmember Van as the liaison to a committee that she's helping to form, to look into and evaluate those efforts. So any discussion, any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I would second, or excuse me, I would like to make the motion for Councilmember Van to be on the exploratory committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recognize Councilmember Van as the liaison to the City of Peace Exploratory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Congratulations, Councilmember Van. Council time. How about we start to my left? Councilmember Kern, you have any?
I had a great honor to attend the very moving Girl Scout event. That was the first time for me, but it was really neat to hear the presentations that were made by the different entities. And a very, very moving event would be the best way I'd have to describe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Littoral?
I just have a couple of things. One, I want to congratulate our extraordinary staff again for their accomplishments with the Ohio Public Works grants. So we just can't say enough about our city and the amount of grants that we are able to obtain, because without that, we would not be the city that we are. So thanks to the staff and their hard work. So staff was able to obtain a grant in the amount of $910,000. So I'm sure when the orange barrels come out again, Kemp Road, which does need some work, will be the benefactor of that. The other, and you'll see this more and more, but we also have the Save the Date for the Police and City Open House, which is one of my favorite events that we have every year. And that's May 18, from 11:00 to 2:00. So please mark your calendars. It's a great event. There's great opportunities, great food, and I hope we do the simulation up here in city council like we did last year. That was a lot of fun. Had a lot of positive comments about that. So just a great opportunity. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, all right. So am I. Councilmember Rushing?
No comment. Thank you.
Councilmember Van?
I just wanted to give some examples of things that I've done, because people want to know what city council members do beyond come to these meetings. So one of the things that I did was I went to a half-day workshop at Wright State, creating energy within organizations, a typical leadership workshop, half-day, to figure out if departments are working together in a positive way, or if they're working because they're threatened, or, you know, how they interact and how the community works. And I thought, as I sat there in that workshop for that half-day, how each of the departments in our city work. And I wondered, you know, are we all positively getting as much energy forward? It was just interesting. But doing leadership things is important. That was a half a day of my time. Councilman Kern and I hosted an event for foreign officers who were in town for three weeks for a conference at Wright-Patterson. And they were here to learn something about what was going on at the base, but as a, they wanted to come to a community like Beaver Creek and learn about local government and learn a little bit more about the United States. And so Councilman Kern and myself spent an hour or two with them, just talking through, and they went over to the police department, too, just kind of talking about local government and how it all works in the United States compared to, there were like six or eight different countries represented in the group. So it's just, but again, it's something different that we're involved in. I went to one of the school meetings. They've got a levy coming up. It's really challenging, the way our state legislature has figured out how levies are. Even though a levy was passed 10 years ago, the inflation happens, and so the schools aren't getting as much money as they did 10 years ago. And so they just don't have as much money as they need to do business as usual. They have to ask for new money just to do business as usual. It's just, it's just interesting. So, but that's, as an elected official, I thought it was important to go and pay attention to what's going on. I went to a regional peace meeting. Like I said before, there's a synergy in southwestern Ohio. Fifty different organizations are invited to get together and talk about what they're working on toward this September's peace month of peace activities. And it's just interesting what's happening from Cincinnati to Dayton, and it's just interesting. So I was at that meeting. I went to the Drug Free Coalition Meeting for Green County as a Beaver Creek person to learn about the different projects that are coming forward as we fight drug addiction and help people become recovered from their addiction. And then I also went to the community park celebration. Sixty years ago, a station wagon full of Girl Scouts tried to earn a badge by driving to Xenia, and they crossed the factory road, railroad track, and were hit by a train. It was, it was before there were crossing guards at the train track. Lots of things have happened since then. The state changed the rules for crossing guards. The train track is no longer there. Beaver Creek Women's League organized because of that, because people in the community thought they wanted to have a voice in making things happen. So it's just good. But I just thought, because we talked about city council salaries, and we, as elected people, are engaged in a lot of things, I'd really undo my laundry list today and tell you all the stuff I've been involved in. So there you go.
Thank you. And it was a tragic event. There was eight Girl Scouts and two leaders.
Yeah, that was horrible. It was horrible.
And so. Vice Mayor?
I have your comment this evening.
All right. Well, on my list, I was going to mention the Girl Scout event. It was, several of us were there. It was a, really a moving event today. The snowflakes were falling real big. It was, it was a very moving event. I had the privilege to go to the Air Force Institute of Technology's graduation last week. Their 100th anniversary. So they've been in business now for, seems like forever, but they had about, oh, in excess of 200 grads. And because of the importance of AFFIT and Wright-Patt, the four-star Chief of the Air Force was there to do the graduation. So very impressive. Mayor's alliance meeting is tomorrow in Columbus, so I'll be up there all day. At the end of the day, then, there's a meet and greet with the state reps and the senators. This, again, examples of things we do besides come to these meetings. And another example of, you know, that's based on my salary, not my, I don't get reimbursed for that, other than a couple bucks for mileage to drive to Columbus. So these are things that, things that we do. We're going to the DDC fly-in. That's a three-day obligation. You went last year, I'm going this time. We, you know, we, it's, and it's work the whole time you're there, so it's not something, you know, these are things that we do over and above. The foreign officers, we do that on a fairly regular basis, at least quarterly, it seems like, but at least three times a year, they bring a group in. And that's, that's very interesting. So I want to thank you, too, for taking over that, the other, the last time. Normally, I do it, and sometimes there'll be one or somebody come with me. No, we do it right here. Oh, that was something else. That was a different one. And I'm surprised that one hasn't come back around yet again. That was for a little, let's see. And that's pretty much it for me. It's been, it's going to be busy, because next week, we'll be gone for three days. And tomorrow, I'll be in Columbus all day. So it, I'm going to move it on now to the city manager.
I'm not going to waste too much time, because we have a presentation tonight that I promised you guys about outlining some employee accomplishments. So I do want to get to that. I did want to say, I did hear that part of the Girl Scout tragedy that happened helped, I guess they were, you know, going to get their badges or whatever, and they were at the Xenia Library or something like that. And part of the motivation was what I heard, hopefully I'm telling the story correctly, was that that did help the community come together about getting the Beaver Creek Library started. So some good came from, you know, of course, a horrific tragedy. Just wanted to share a couple announcements briefly tonight before we get into some of the employee recognition things. Beaver Creek Police this week at Kroger inside Starbucks, so at Starbucks inside Kroger, I should say, will be coffee with a cop. Come meet the members of the police department. No agenda, just an opportunity, ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know each other. That is Wednesday, this Wednesday, March 27, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So come out, please, and see us. That's 3165 Dayton Xenia Road. Just wanted to, project, because everybody's going to be asking, but on Summerfield, the county will be in the Summerfield development that is off of Stedman, that is in between Dayton Xenia and Kemp. Off of 675, you see the big water tower. The county is going to be painting that. Project will start like April 1st, according to the weather, last 90 days. The county had, did a press release and said there would be no water supply, or water pressure, or any issues as a result of that. And any questions towards that can be geared towards, directed towards the county sanitary engineering department. And lastly, I just wanted to say, because this is coming up very fast, okay? July 4th celebration this year, the committee has named it Take Flight. That is in recognition of moon landing and some other historical things that have happened with flight. We are still in need of sponsorships. There's different giving levels. You can review all this information on our website. Grand Marshall nominations definitely due by May 1st. That, again, there's a form to fill out that's available on our website. Parade applications, again, available on our website. So please visit Beaver Creek website under Parks and Rec. Also, there is a new system that the parks has, how they, how you do reserve your shelters, how you pay for yoga, how you pay for all that, under MyRec. And that is, again, under the Parks Department at the Beaver Creek website. You can get to that link there. Please contact City of Beaver Creek, Go Parks and Rec, for any questions, or email parks@beavercreekohio.gov for that. Tonight, I did want to bring up Jill Bissinger, our HR manager. She, we have several employees here in the audience already. We just, you know, this is important. Council doesn't hear it enough, and I know, we, I know, I appreciate staff, and I tell them all day long, but, you know, they don't, you guys don't hear all the things that are happening with the employees, all the, from the recognitions to the boards they are on representing the city. And we thought we'd take 10 minutes just to review this. I think you'll be blown away and impressed with how much is going on by our employees and as we honor them. So Jill, go ahead, please.
Good evening. With the city of Beaver Creek, we realize that our employees are one of our greatest assets, and we're delighted to be able to honor their dedicated service and commitment to the community this evening and to its residents. It's our employees that demonstrate the ideal of working for a better future for people. And the success of our city is a direct result of their efforts and their dedication, and as such, is a differentiating factor that sets us apart from other communities. On behalf of the city of Beaver Creek, it is with great pride and admiration that we highlight a number of our employees this evening and their individual and collective contributions to the city's success. So first up, we have Jeff McGrath. He's our planning and development director, as you know, and he serves on the County Court Board of Directors, which offers affordable housing and economic programs for residents and small businesses. Randy Burkett, our city planner, participates on the Green County Airport Board of Zoning Appeals. Sandra Pereira, our associate city planner, has obtained the Association of State Flood Plane Manager certification. The association's mission is to promote education, policies, and activities that mitigate current and future losses, costs, and human suffering caused by flood planes, and to protect the national and beneficial functions of flood planes, all without causing adverse impacts. Matthew Funk, code enforcement officer, holds the license of an Ohio-registered sanitarian and earned the credential of a registered environmental health specialist, registered sanitarian, through the National Environmental Health Association. Matt also serves on the Board of Trustees for the Ohio Code of Enforcement Officials Association, as well as the Xenia Board of Zoning Appeals. Jeff Mormon, city engineer. Jeff Mormon, City Engineer, and Nick Smith, Assistant City Engineer, both serve on the Technical Advisory Committee of the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, advising on technical issues and other delegated matters. Bill Cussera, Finance Administrative Services Director, is the current President of the Ohio Benefits Cooperative, which is a not-for-profit partnership of government and public entities that have pooled resources to help control our benefit costs. Three employees within the public service area have achieved the years in service and completed the core training and experience requirements in order to be reclassified to the next higher position of Operator Two. They are Andy Delaney, Nathan Sparks, and Mike Winterbottom. Additionally, the 2018 Employee of the Year, Jerry Russell, our Building and Grounds Technician, was honored at the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet in March. Jerry has consistently demonstrated above and beyond service in both attitude and also in performance while maintaining our city properties. Kim Farrell, Parks and Recreation and Culture Superintendent, is active on the Beaver Creek Historical Society's Board, the Cultural Arts Connection, which promotes and provides cultural arts activities, the Fourth of July Committee, and the City of Beaver Creek Park Board. Plus, she just recently graduated from the Ohio Division of Forestry, Tree Commission Academy in January. Erin Harris, Recreation Program Supervisor, serves on the Beaver Creek Youth Development Board, Fourth of July Committee, and Beaver Creek Park Board, in addition to her involvement with the Popcorn Festival. Police Chief Dennis Evers serves on the Criminal Justice Advisory Boards for Sinclair College, Clark State University, and the Green County Career Center. Chief Evers also currently serves on the Ohio Association of Polygraph Examiners Board of Directors. Captain Jeff Fiorita graduated from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program, which is the pinnacle of law enforcement leadership training. He was also, he is also enrolled in the FBI National Academy, a professional course of study for U.S. and international law enforcement managers. Now remember, keep in mind that participation in this training is by invitation only, and attendees are nominated for their leadership qualities. Captain Fiorita currently serves on the Ohio Association of Polygraph Examiners Board of Directors. Captain Scott Molnar holds a seat on the Public Safety Leadership Academy Executive Board, and Captain Chad Lindsey will be attending the Public Safety Leadership Academy in April. Sergeant Phil Westler earned the Kalia Commission for Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies' Accreditation Manager Certification, and Sergeant Westler is one of only 16 internationally to attain this certification and be recognized as an expert in the field of Kalia accreditation, which demonstrates professional standards and excellence. Additionally, Sergeant Westler is President of the State of Ohio Accreditation Resource Coalition Executive Board. Sergeant Westler is currently participating in the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program, which includes master's level courses on subjects such as ethics, organizational leadership, strategic planning, risk management, and interpersonal skills. Sergeant Nick Amato graduated from the Police Executive Leadership College, focusing on developing advanced leadership skills, and Sergeant Dan Crawl is currently attending the Police Executive Leadership College. Officer Joel Schuler was presented with the 2018 MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, Award of Excellence, and has once again been selected to receive the 2019 Award for his hard work and dedication in making Ohio roadways and Beaver Creek roadways safe for travel. Officer James Spicer received the Knights of Columbus Council 7981 Blue Coat Award. This award recognizes local officers for their strong commitment to family, church, and community. Officer Cynthia Puffley, in collaboration with the Green County Consortium on Domestic and Sexual Violence, was presented the Law Enforcement Excellence in Service Award for her response to domestic violence and disturbance incidents, handling each with compassion and understanding toward the victims. Retired Officer Kevin Kovacs was awarded the Green Optimist Club Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. This honor is given to officers who have provided exceptional service and significant contributions to the betterment of the Beaver Creek community. And Officer Kovacs served the community for 25 years, including six years, as the Dare Officer in Beaver Creek City Schools. Beaver Creek Police Department received the Carl Day Volunteer Service Award from the Green and Montgomery County Boards of Development Disabilities for its work with the voices of Green County and Voices Matter self-advocacy teams. Additionally, individual commendations were presented by Chief Evers, recognizing employees for outstanding performance and achievement, and those department commendations included Officer Joel Diaz for putting himself in harm's way by going on top of a burning building to locate the source of a fire. Officers Jennifer Stevens and Merrill Westerhide for engaging with and maintaining constant dialogue with a suicidal woman attempting to jump off of an I-675 overpass. Sergeant Scott Spangler was recognized with the Meritorious Service Award for his control of the incident with a suicidal woman, and for going above and beyond the call of duty at great personal risk. Detective Sean Williams for his tremendous work in helping to eliminate drugs and crime in the community. Officer Todd Suki also earned a Meritorious Service Award for his off-duty life-saving actions while dining at a Centerville restaurant. The Miami Valley Crime Stoppers 2018 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award was presented to Officer Suki in January for this selfless act. The COPP Citizens of, on preventative patrol of the year was presented to Don Wagner in recognition for his hard work, his dedication, his positive attitude and professionalism in carrying, carrying out the mission of providing quality service to the Beaver Creek residents, and he is a great example of just why the COPP program is so successful. Sarah DeBord, Communications Operator, was awarded Civilian Employee of the Year. Her experience and knowledge of the CAD system, skills as a training officer, initiative and team spirit are commendable. And the Officer of the Year Award was bestowed upon Officer Brian Klein. He is, he has a servant's heart, progressing through specialized positions and serving as longtime Officer in Charge and Field Training Officer. So a tremendous thanks is extended to our valued staff for their dedication, their loyalty, their strong work ethic, their substantial contributions and commitment, and the extra efforts exerted while continuing to fulfill their full-time responsibilities and duties are duly noted and appreciated not only by fellow coworkers, but also by the citizens of the City of Beaver Creek. They are active messengers, and that the City of Beaver Creek is a truly great place to work, and they are true ambassadors for the city.
Well Jill, thank you very much. That was a wonderful report, and here on council, and we know we have a wonderful staff, and we, we recognize that every day, but what we don't know and didn't know, all that is the fine print, which you presented today, and so I'm sure on behalf of council, and they can speak for themselves in a minute, we're going, we want to offer our sincere thanks and commend everyone for their service above and beyond. So anyone else have anything like they would like to add to that?
Oh, I would just like to add, since we have several of the officers in the audience, that they should come up for a photo and introduce themselves, since we have such an amazing police department.
Let's do that.
Especially with our graduates here coming up and all the fine work.
How about you come out and stand right up in here, and they'll get, let us be in the background, you guys be in the front.
It's not that the other.
Please, rest your staff.
Yes.
All the staff.
Captain Fiorita, would you grab the, Captain Fiorita?
All the staff.
Would you get out of the microphone so you can all introduce yourselves? I think that would be wonderful.
Mr. McGrath.
We're all back there taking a picture.
Mr. Jeff, both Jeffs.
Come on, people.
Hold on a second here. Come on, guys. Chief.
Jim.
Bill.
Wait a minute, you gotta get, you have to get them all, everybody needs to be up.
If you want to be seen.
Chuck.
Will be seen here, yeah. I guess we should kind of stand over. Come on over, guys.
I pulled the chair away.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing?
Trying to hack that.
See how Bill gets out of taking the picture, gets out of being there?
That picture constitutes a frame-up.
Oh, wait, 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 you haven't introduced yourselves.
Introduce yourself to the TV audience, please.
I'm Officer Jim Spicer.
Thank you, Officer Spicer.
Sergeant Nick Amato.
Sergeant Scott Spangler.
Captain Jeff Fiorita.
Hi, gentlemen, thank you so much, and again, we appreciate everything you do beyond your normal service. How about a round of applause? And that's all my report tonight. Find my seat here. All right. Let's see where we're at here, we need, so you're finished? So now, we, citizen comments, is there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please, mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.